There is no school Wednesday through Friday, November 24th through 26th due to Thanksgiving break. There is no school Wednesday through Friday, December 24th through January 2nd due to Christmas, New Years, and Winter Break. School will reopen on Monday, January 5th, 2015.
Very good. Correspondence. We have one letter, an invitation from the St. Patrick's Committee of Hoyo inviting the school committee members to participate in their 64th Annual Parade to be held on Sunday, March 22nd. So we'd have to notify Sue by January 17th. Okay, very good. Gifts. Do we have some gifts?
A number of gifts.
Okay, we're going to begin with a motion to vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. From David Boyle, A-Z Storage, a donation in the amount of $1,500 towards science students pursuit of academic excellence. A $125 donation from an anonymous donor to help support PD organized by Kelly Brown at East Hampton High School. A donation from Florence Savings Bank of $250 for the Student Renaissance. A donation from North Hampton Pediatric Dentistry, $50 for Student Renaissance. A donation from Dalton Laval Post 224 of $100 to Student Renaissance. Donation from the East Hampton Police Association in the amount of $250 also toward Student Renaissance. And two $50 donations each, one from Regalia and Walder Orthodontics, and one from Think and Paris Insurance Agency, both toward the Student Renaissance. Additional $25 donation from Shelburne Falls Coffee Roasters toward the Student Renaissance. A $500 donation from the Helping Hand Society toward the Dog Show. And then donations in the amount of $50 each from the following. Biggie's Supermarket, Architect LLC, Flurry Lumber, Mantis Graphics, Dr. Nora Hanke, A-Z Storage and Properties, Old Company Package Store, Taylor Real Estate, East Hampton Savings Bank, and the Riverbend Animal Hospital. Is there a second?
Second?
All those in fever?
Aye.
Thank you very, very much for those generous gifts. We are very grateful.
Deb, can I ask two questions related to this? The first is, I wonder if how many people who will be viewing this know the purpose for which the Dog Show and Student Renaissance serve the students? And it might be worth just explaining that briefly?
I'm not sure I'm the best person to do that, but...
And it doesn't have to be tonight. I just think that, you know, some of these, you know, the first one, supporting science students to pursue academic excellence is self-explanatory, although it'd be interesting to know more about what that $1,500 is being used for. But I think a lot of the donations here were made in support of two programs that are probably worthy of a lot of support and might gain more if we could just explain. And I guess the second part, I was hoping that in the, at the December 9th meeting, or perhaps in the January meeting, we could have that honor roll published of all the donors. And maybe that's the right time to explain what those opportunities are.
Right, I think that Gail Cannon has done a really excellent job of putting on that Dog Show. And I know that she puts, see, proceeds to a good cause, but she would be a better person to explain that as well as the High School Renaissance Program. So we'll get them on the agenda, on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Very good. Next on the agenda is our public speak time. At this time, anyone is invited to come and speak to us at the podium if they had a topic they wanted to share. But it looks as though we don't have anyone here tonight. So we'll move on to the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Nothing new.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Do we have a CES update?
We met last week, and I think if it's okay with you guys, Bill Deal, the executive director of the Collaborative, he puts out a really nice succinct, it's usually not more than a page, two-page executive director's report. And so I intended to get it to you electronically ahead of time, and I didn't. So there's copies here for everyone tonight, and I gave a copy to Sue so it can be included. And that might just be a nice way for you guys to succinctly get updated on the happenings because there's some interesting stuff. And I continue to be impressed with Nancy's and the whole leadership team and how many resources the Collaborative offers that East Hampton Schools take part in. That always is kind of exciting and informative for me to hear. So it's an exciting time for the Collaborative because they're really, he's moving things forward in a really positive, community-engaged direction. Take a look at the report, and if you have any questions, let me know. We'll go from there.
The Collaborative has been very supportive of many initiatives in our district, so we're always very pleased to be a member of the Collaborative. The superintendents of the districts that belong to the Collaborative serve on a steering committee, and we meet once a month to talk about what's going on at the Collaborative, the different offerings for us, the different offerings we've taken advantage of, and also for us as superintendents to talk about some of the current issues that we all face. For instance, when the educator evaluation system came into law, we had a number of discussions about that and really supported each other in putting these initiatives into place in our district. So it's been a tremendous support to us as a district.
Great. Okay, Brian Attwater is unable to be with us tonight, so he filled me in that there wasn't too much to update everyone on at this moment in time. So we'll move on from the Student Activities Update to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Deb. I asked Ruth Ever, the Coalition Coordinator for the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition, to come and give the school committee an update this evening on the work of the Coalition. Ruth has been busy putting in a number of different programs and services and collaborating with different organizations in the community with, through the funding given to us by the Drug Free Communities Act, the federal grant that we received a little over a year ago, which is $125,000 a year for five years. So we're excited. Ruth and I have attended a training in Gulfport, Mississippi, and Ruth has attended some other trainings. So they do give the grantees a lot of training and support in doing the work of the Coalition. So I'm going to have Ruth explain to you, because I think she's most knowledgeable, about the goals of the Coalition and the work that's been done today. So Ruth?
Thank you. I have some extra handouts. You got the brochure ready in your packet tonight, but this is a one-page sort of descriptor of the Coalition and our relationship to some of our consulting agencies. And just some handouts, I have a lot of materials now that we take when we do tabling and stuff. So I just gave you a little sampling just to see some stuff that we give to parents and things like that. So I think I was here maybe last January or February, like right after I had started. And we're now in year two officially of the grant, so we have a little more to report, which is exciting. Some of this is just a quick, I have a little PowerPoint just to kind of take us through it.
Sue, could you turn some of the lights off, please?
I think I might have shown you this one a year ago, which is, it's always good to sort of remember why we're doing this work and why the federal government thinks it's important to keep funding the substance abuse prevention work, preventing underage drinking and drug use. So the four outside circles are sort of these key issues to keep in mind, which is the top one being one of the most important ones, that the brain is still developing until kids turn 25. And so a lot of times that gets a little lost in the, especially when you, the whole marijuana debate that's happening, and people are like, "Well, it's legal anyway." It will never be legal for young people, and it will always have an impact on their brains in a different way than it does for adults. So it's good to keep that in mind. And then in terms of, from a school committee's perspective, the impact on kids in their other parts of their lives when they start getting involved in risky behaviors like their academic performance, their ability to engage, show up at school, things like that. So it's really connected. I have a couple of data slides, a couple of them you might have seen last year. We've also done some interesting stuff with the data that I really think is worth sharing because it's very informative. First couple are about how, what a strong impact parent attitudes, I apologize, I'm not sure why I was doing this, I'm not even touching it, but, parent attitudes have on youth use. And you can just visually kind of see what happens when parents send a message that it's not okay for you to drink versus when the kids don't get that. And this is from the student's perspective. My parents think it's wrong for me to drink alcohol. We ask questions along these lines. For the kids who are getting the message, my parents think it's wrong, that's the smaller brown graph on the left, and the one on the right is kids, this is in the last 30 days, percent of students who have drunk. Similarly, with marijuana, when the students are getting the message, my parents think it's wrong for me to use marijuana, they are much less likely to use.
So this is all self-reported. How do you gather the data from the teenage? Because I would assume like children of parents who frown upon activities like that are probably more likely to...
To be in school.
To be in school and maybe not disclosing if they were to engage. So how do you, what steps do you take when you're gathering the data to try to ensure that you're getting honest information?
So we have a number of steps that we take. This is a survey that is done every two years in the entire county, so every school is doing it. And so we're able to compare our school district with other school districts, which is really helpful, puts us in a context. And then we also compare ourselves to the national data, which is what this, it's called the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey, and they do it all over the country. So that's the first thing, is that if we were way off, we, you know, we're comparing ourselves to other schools, and we're right in line with what you would expect to see in a school like ours, a school district like ours. In the, just to finish, we also have a number of questions that we put into the survey that sometimes we have made up drugs, so that if the kid's just checking, "Yeah, I do all this stuff," you know, that's, we sort of tend to throw out the ones. At the end, we ask, "How honest have you been with this survey?" And, you know, we found, I mean, these surveys are done year after year on a national basis, and in general, they're considered to be quite reliable. We don't do them with fourth graders or, you know, kids, they're with eighth, 10th, and 12th. So at that point, kids are at a point where they're, you know, they're able to understand the questions and go through them. And we try to build in a lot of different mechanisms, and then we, they call it cleaning the data, so they really go through. And if they start to see, they look for certain tracks, you know, certain things that show us that this probably wasn't done on, like they did all As or something like that, you know?
Did they sign, is their name on it?
No, it's completely anonymous.
Is the holding does it on insane A or something?
Yeah, there's, and we really try to emphasize that to the students so that they have a sense of total anonymity. Nobody in the school district is even looking at the raw data. That goes out to Utah, actually. And then we get back a report from them. So there's no way to sort of make those links.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the posters that we've seen around the building and around town, and someone looking quickly at the bar graph might not pay attention to the script that's to the left of the vertical axis. So these are students who self-identified as using. So it's already a subset.
Yes.
And I think the contextual piece that would go with that is what percentage of the students are in that group? Because somebody might look at that graph, the previous one, and think, "Well, 75% of the parents in East Hampton don't think it's a problem for them to drink alcohol," but that's not what the data says. It's 75%...
And we would never show this in the candy.
Right. Of the kids who have used alcohol, say that about their parents. And that's a very different number. So again, I'm thinking just for sort of public consumption of the data, that piece on the left that's in the smallest text of anything up there is, in many ways, the most important piece of information. This is a, this is not the whole spectrum of East Hampton families. Is it? Right? Okay.
Yes, this is the small subset of students who actually drank in the last 30 days, which is only about 30% of our students. Or even less.
So of one-third or less of the population, that's the data that's true.
What's important about this really is that this is true across the board, not just in East Hampton. What we know is that when parents send a strong no-use message with clear expectations, kids are less likely to indulge or engage in risky behaviors like drinking and smoking.
Why is it so far below 100, the total, then?
Um, because there's two ways to read this, right? You can either read it as that you're only surveying the students who admit to having used marijuana in the past 30 days. There is some other numbers in between a little bit. I mean, this isn't necessarily the whole thing. This is giving you a slice of it. No, it's fine. I don't want to take too much time. I'm happy to come back and do even more data if, you know, if you want to do that another time. Let's schedule that one. Be happy to do that. Let me keep going here. This one is Opportunities and Rewards for Pro-Social Involvement in 10th Grade. And the reason I'm showing you this one and the next one, which is 8th Grade, is because this is what we call a protective factor. This is what, when kids feel engaged in either, and you can, it's a little hard to read, but the far left is community, the two middle ones are family, and the two right ones are school. And so when students feel like there are opportunities for them to get involved in positive, we call it pro-social, so they're in after-school clubs, they're in theater and sports, and, you know, there's things that they can engage with that are positive, healthy, life-affirming kind of activities. You know, it can run the gamut, whether at school or at home. The higher those numbers are, the more protected we consider those kids. They're less likely to then want to be doing risky things or engaging in drugs when they've got all this other good stuff going on. I'm showing you this in part to show you the contrast between 8th and 10th grade. This is 8th grade. And the brown graph is the national averages, that's our Bach-Harrison comparative, and the blue is our 8th graders. I'm going to go back up again just to show you 10th grade. You can see it's pretty much with the national, you know, the high school, because when they get to the high school, and partly this is an age thing, you know, as the kids get older, they get more mature, they start to engage a little more, they're more socially adept. But partly, it's an indicator that the middle school is where we really want to put a lot of our attention, because those are, that's when the risk really starts to come up for kids. Okay, these are just, again, I'm, it's showing it to you more as a visual than we're going to get, you know, it's hard to even read those numbers. This is looking at, and this was some interesting playing with the data that we got to do this year. The question is, putting them all together, what were your grades like in the last year? The two on the left are around marijuana, the two on the right are alcohol. So the one on the left is, the far-left one is, did not use in the last 30 days, the next one over is, used marijuana in the last 30 days. And then the third bar graph is, did not use alcohol, the far-right one is, used alcohol. And if you just look at the visual, you start, I want you to see a pattern. I'm going to go through a couple of these, particularly be looking at the marijuana one. I'm sorry, I don't know how, what else to do with this to get this day. Thinking back over the past year in school, how often did you try to do your best work in school? Again, look at the, and the numbers here are, the top yellow one is seldom, never, the one below, the beige one is sometimes. So those are kind of considered the more risky categories of kids. The light blue is the often, and the bottom is almost always. Look at the marijuana compared to the no-use, even compared to the alcohol use. Okay? This one is, thinking back over the past year in school, how often did you enjoy being in school? Again, when you look at the marijuana, the top one is seldom, never, the next one is sometimes, often, almost always. When you put together the seldom, never, and sometimes for the marijuana users, that's 80% of your kids right there. Now, these are small numbers, so we don't take this as, you know, hard sort of fact, but it's very informative. And the last one is, during the last four weeks, how many whole days of school did you miss because you skipped or cut? I circled the 10% of the marijuana users compared with, which is six or more days, that's the top green bar. And for all the other ones, it's like 1%, 2%, 4% for the alcohol, 10% for marijuana. So if you want to think about where to find those at-risk kids, it's the ones who are using the marijuana. Any questions about these?
I have a lot of questions, but we should have a meeting.
Definitely. And I have more data. I just, I tried to hone this down.
Are we distinguishing at all, is marijuana kind of as deep as we're getting into these conversations with these young people? Are we talking about other kinds of narcotics with them at all? Are we distinguishing them?
Yes, we absolutely define, I mean, we ask about every kind of drug that you could use, pretty much.
So then, I just want to make one suggestion. I know this is backing up, but when we go back to that data about parent responses, I think the piece that I would like to see along with that is the response by the students who identified as not having used in the last 30 days. Because I think seeing their attitude about what their parents think in comparison with the ones who identified as using, and what they thought their parents, would tell us more about the power of parent attitudes to influence the behavior. Does that make you sense?
So you're saying you want to cross-tab the, can you say that again?
The previous set, the initial set that I asked that question about, in both cases, we were looking at data by people who are self-described users of alcohol and marijuana and what their parents thought, and the difference that it made. I'm curious to see whether, among the students who say they didn't use, what they think of what their parents' attitude is.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Because that would convey to a parent, right now, we don't know what difference, we just know that they think there's a difference, but we don't know between the two populations from the data that we've got.
Between the users and the non-users.
Right.
And parent, yeah, that's, I can definitely look at that if I don't already have it.
I'd be interested to have some sort of conversation, too, about what the consequences are for youth in this community.
We do ask about that.
Yeah. Because I, again, I think that there's a lot of people, for example, who go to the doctor's office and claim to not smoke or claim to not drink. I'm concerned about the self-reporting, especially with teenagers, from my experience in my work with them, that I don't know, I think it's, I think they identify to a point that they won't admit those kind of things in certain households. So I'd be interested to see, are there severe consequences if you partake in this, which would make me believe that even if they did, they wouldn't tell anybody? They wouldn't report to an adult, they wouldn't report to a parent. So I'm just curious, like teasing out all those and trying to not let anyone fall through the cracks and not just look at this as...
What I'd be happy to do is come back with our data person from the Collaborative, actually. We can bring Catherine and Sue back, they'd be happy to come back if we schedule it, and, you know, really, you know, get it on the agenda and spend some time looking at the data, just let us know when.
Could even do a work session on it, you know, for those of you who are interested.
And just to know that we're actually going to be doing the survey again in March, so this is already getting, you know, a little old. I mean, it's still relevant, absolutely, but we will be collecting new data in March. So let me just go through this quickly, I don't want to take too much of your time. Just a quick reminders about, this is our Drug Free Communities Grant. These are the main goals that the, our funder is kind of interested in having us be work on, which is strengthening local coalitions, building capacity, and of course, reducing substance use. And always good to remember that in communities where they have this grant, they do see a reduction in alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana use. I'm going to skip this one. This is basically our mission, which is in the brochure, you have that information. And again, just a reminder, this is our strategic prevention framework, which is the structure and framework that our funder expects us to use. It's your basic public health model of, you know, kind of looking at what you're doing, building capacity, planning, doing the work, assessing and evaluating it, kind of going in that cycle. I'm going to just go through a little bit of what we've actually been doing for the last year. Pushing everything. Okay. So I was hired in January. We did things like finally get a logo and put together brochures, you know, materials that we could start to really hand out to people, business cards, things like that, really basic, getting set up kind of structure for a business, almost. We reestablished our meetings, we are creating our infrastructure, which is still evolving, but we do have an executive committee now, we're working on our bylaws. We had a lot, as Nancy said, we did have a lot of requirements in the first year, meetings and trainings, and I got to go to Gulfport, Mississippi for three weeks, two of them in the summer. It was fun. To meet with other coalitions, do training intensive, I mean, it was wonderful. I'm, you know, I'm being a little facetious, but not exactly where you want to go in August, but it was actually a great training. We started really doing outreach in the community, key informal interviews presented to you many months ago and again tonight.
Ruth, before you go on, you might want to talk with, tell the school committee a little bit more about the executive committee, who serves on the executive committee?
Sure. We have, I don't know if I could list them all, we have various sectors, we don't have all 12 sectors on the executive committee, but we have probably close to eight or nine people in different sectors. We have school, we have community agencies, we have the hospital, or health hospital, the school resource officer, police, so different kind of sector. We tried to get, you know, we have two youth on the executive committee, so it's a nice diverse group.
Several parents.
Yes, several parents as well.
Everybody.
Yeah. So it's been, you know, a good group to come together, and we're still now at the point of starting to form more formalized work groups and standing committees and really thinking about what structure do we need to move forward effectively.
We have the liaison with the community from the district attorney's office, Don Gallagher.
Right.
So it's really a nice committee.
We've worked in a number of areas, doing outreach, kind of collaborating with other groups. I've listed a number of the different sort of task forces. I actually didn't print out the slides because they were just really small and hard to read, and I figured I would email them, and plus, it seems like a waste of paper to just print a whole lot of paper. I'm happy to email it to anybody who's interested, so I reckon...
I was going to ask, so you are involved with the Heroin Opioid Task Force?
Yes. We, I've gone to those meetings, there've been a few, and now we're waiting for the funding. Hampshire County is probably going to be funded.
I would hope so.
Yeah, I mean, they were, I think, the sole people actually filling out the application.
Right, the application was filled out by North Hampton, but I went to all those meetings, too, and it represents all the surrounding communities that we signed on. I think I've learned there's a support from the police and all different...
Yeah, from those. Yeah, so East Hampton will be one of the communities involved, so it makes sense for us to stay connected to that, and I think that they expect to be working very closely with the Coalition, because, you know, they're going to be, they're going to have a lot of work to do when that comes through, so. And we've been involved with the DA's office, with their conferences, planning, school outreach, different, you know, different capacities. We've continued to do the beverage server trainings. There was one actually happened last night, and one that's happening next week. And it happened also earlier in the spring. We did compliance checks and purchase surveys. We've done two sets where we took people over 21 out to see if they got checked for ID, and then people under 21 to see if they did not get sold to. The latter one actually being illegal, the former one, you know, not illegal, but we're hoping that people, if you look like you're under 40, you should be checking for ID. For, in the most part, we've had, the last round we had was 100% compliance with the youth. They definitely looked underage, and that was good, and they got checked, so we were pleased with that.
Those are a huge benefit to the city, by the way, for the licensing board. We very much appreciate these compliance checks, and I'm not sure how much information you have about them, but they're done in a totally different way. At one time, they were just done by the AVCC, just kind of like violations, you're fined, the fine goes to the state, or, you know, lose your license in view of the fine. The way the Coalition does them is very different, it's very unique, it's very positive. It's more about trying to provide training and information versus looking to do...
Something to avoid if you're a restaurant owner, ways to like...
Right. No, it's all, it's all very positive. They're not trying to, you know, penalize you with, you know, fines in lieu of losing your license.
Well, for the purchase surveys, definitely, it's...
It's been very helpful.
Yeah.
And a lot of education and a lot of helpful hints and a lot of ways to do compliance, you know, to check.
Yeah.
So it's been very helpful.
When we use the young people who are over 21, that's our, we call it Rewards and Responsibilities Program, and we go in and give them $5 gift cards if they checked for ID and, like, right on the spot and sort of congratulate them, and it's sort of that positive affirmation. You know, over time, well, we had 100% compliance this time when we took the underage students in, so we didn't have to deal with that. But, you know, at some point, if we start to see that kind of sales, and we're hoping that we actually get regulations passed, that's definitely part of what we want to continue to work on, is stronger policies in place so that, for example, training is required every three years for certification to actually be able to sell this drug. And then that would encourage them to actually go to these trainings that we're offering hugely subsidized, so it's an incentive, again, for the store owners or the, you know, bar and restaurant owners to be able to go, that the Coalition is subsidizing this to really encourage them to get all of their staff trained. But we want it to be required because right now, they're not... of their staff trained. But we want it to be required, because right now, they're not taking as much advantage of it as they could in East Hampton.
It's a huge benefit.
Yeah, absolutely.
And huge service.
We've had the town hall meeting. We had Dr. Jennifer Michaels speak in June. We've co-sponsored the Drug Takeback Day, the DA's Drug Awareness Conference that had like 250 students attended, including a number of students from East Hampton. In fact, our SAD students were presenting at that conference, and one of the East Hampton High School students, Brian Delaney, was a keynote speaker, which was a wonderful honor for the city to have that happen. And then we had our first retreat on November 15th, just a few days ago. And at that meeting, what we did was look at this kind of structure that where we look at the problem, we look at the root causes, what's going on locally in our community about it, and then what can we do about it? What exact strategies are we going to take? And again, just to remind us, alcohol, tobacco, and marijuana are the three problem areas we identified a few years ago in East Hampton as being the priority issues. Tobacco in particular in East Hampton, because the adults in East Hampton smoke at a higher rate, and there's a lot of concern among the local hospitals and stuff about that, so it made sense. And there's a lot of energy around that, a lot of interest and things happening in the tobacco regulations that had gotten passed last year. So we want to keep going with that. There's a lot of interest in that. I want to recognize the opioid, the heroin issue that is, you know, in our community and in all of the communities. It's epidemic around here, and we're very cognizant of that. Realistically, with one staff person, I don't know that we can take on four issues, but it's something that we're very aware of and is often discussed, and sort of something that I think will evolve as we mature ourselves as a coalition, and we say, okay, what, you know, if this funding comes through, then obviously it's something we're going to need to look at and take on. So just really quickly, the common root causes, they're pretty much the same in most communities, and these are the most common ones that we're dealing with, which is the availability, accessibility issue, and then the attitude issue of from youth, their peers, and from parents. In other words, when you feel like it's accepted in your community, you're more likely to do something. When you feel like it's not accepted, or your parents, as we saw in those graphs, you know, when your parents don't want you doing it, you're less likely to do it. And the last one is the community laws and norms, which is about, you know, what's the message that they're getting. Quick example here with the blue box at the top is the problem. Youth in East Hampton are using marijuana. The brown boxes are the root causes. It's easily available, parent attitudes are favorable, youth attitudes, and the community laws and norms. And then when you go down to the goal boxes, those are the local conditions. So what's happening in East Hampton around this? And these aren't all the local conditions. It says sampling. Youth are getting marijuana at parties. The parents don't necessarily know the harm of marijuana and its impact on the brain. Youth don't really believe that marijuana is that harmful, and we see this in our data. They understand that tobacco can be... For the most part, all of them get tobacco's really harmful. That number goes way down when we ask how harmful do you think it would be to smoke marijuana regularly? It is of concern. It definitely is impacting their brain and is harmful to them. But the feel right now in Massachusetts and across the country is, oh, it's not that bad, and it's becoming legal, and, you know, there's... We're part of a once-in-a-century happening, which is the possibility of a drug becoming legalized, which is, when you think about it, that doesn't happen. Last time it happened was almost 100 years ago with prohibition. So it's something we really want to stay on top of and be aware of. And then the last one kind of addresses that dispensaries opening in the region, convey a message that marijuana is medicinal without conveying the harm to the developing youth brain. So just a quick, kind of, some of the things we're working on next. As a result of our retreat that just happened a few days ago, we're really going to put together our strategic plan, looking at what are the action steps we want to take in our local community to address these issues. As I was saying, formalizing our work groups, standing committees, things like finance committee, things like that, getting our policies and our bylaws kind of in place. We are hoping to hire a youth outreach and parent outreach worker, just a stipended position, not a lot of money, but we were decided to sort of move some money around so that we could get some other people to help particularly people from the community who can be doing just ongoing kind of outreach, probably some social media stuff, things like that. Continuing with the policy work, that's certainly a primary piece of what our funder expects us to be working on. They really want to see those environmental strategies, where we're looking at changing at the community-wide level. This will be a year that we'll really start to work back up to doing parent-focused campaigns. That will be hopefully something in the middle school. I think there's a lot of interest there in classes or programs, media campaigns, doing some parent surveys, getting some data back from parents, because as you see, we've interviewed the youth a lot. Well, now we want to make sure we're getting information from the parents, from their perspective. Continue to support youth leadership and build the collaborative efforts and do more outreach. I talked a little bit about the marijuana issue, needing to really stay on top of that, because it keeps changing. Continue to work very closely with the police, doing the enforcement, as we talked about. Esper is the screening, brief intervention, referral to treatment, which is what's kind of a trending thing right now, showing a lot of positive data, which is when you ask just a very short series of questions, usually with ninth graders, because they're already doing screening. You throw in just a few more questions about what kind of risk they're at for alcohol use. And it in itself is an educational tool, and then if you start to... If they answer positively to any of the questions, then there's a few follow-up questions. And, you know, occasionally, they may end up with a few kids that you end up actually referring out for more intensive intervention. It in and of itself is more of the educational tool than we're going to suddenly uncover, you know, 50 kids who have an addiction problem. That's not... That's what's been shown in other school districts. They only end up with a few kids. But that's a really important intervention point right there, because you're getting them early on, not several years down, when they might have gotten, you know, gotten into a lot more trouble with it. And as I said, monitoring the opioid prescription, drug use trends. So that's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe. Does anybody have any other questions, or?
A quick question. You mentioned that you do screen. There's ways to call out information in the survey to discern what different substances are being used.
Yes.
In addition to alcohol, tobacco.
Yes.
Marijuana. And I respect all the work that's been done, certainly. I'm a little concerned that we're... I hope that we're not boxing in on goals that are three years old, and we are not willing to look outside of those goals. So I'm hoping that the funder and the executive committee, based on data that you get, on those other... If we have other substances that are riding... rising to the... rising, I hope that we wouldn't just say, well, these are our goals that were established by us and our funder three years ago.
Of course. I mean, consistently, marijuana, tobacco, and alcohol are, you know, way out past any other drug or any other substance that young people might be using. There's really no comparison, and I'd be happy to show you that data. I didn't want to take too much time tonight, but I can send you that data. The heroin issue in particular, that one might be coming to people's mind, because it, you know, it's this epidemic kind of issue. We're not seeing it in young people. We're seeing it in young adults. That doesn't mean that it's not of concern in young people, but it's not where they're starting to use it, that it might be prescription drugs might be coming up more. But again, the numbers compared to alcohol and marijuana and even tobacco, you know, it's... Those are still, you know, keep rising to the top. And that's true across the country, except for the prescription drug use is starting. That's where the trend... That was... If anything, that's where we would expect to see the trend. And from prescription drugs, that's when... That's usually how it starts for people. They don't... It's rare that somebody goes straight to heroin. That's not how the... That's just not how the path kind of tends to go for people.
It's just a similar correlation, like you spoke of. In our community, we have a high, apparently, a high usage of adults using tobacco. Therefore, you're going to see a higher tobacco use amongst our youth.
Right.
I'd be interested in... It's a big job to try to call data on how much of our adult community is using what substances. But I maybe shouldn't say this on public camera, but I would personally be more concerned about knowing there are other substances that are being highly used by our adults influencing our younger people than marijuana. And that doesn't mean that I dismiss the child brain development piece. I've been in mental health and CD for decades, but I just hope that we keep an open mind.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we're not... I wouldn't say anybody in our coalition, I mean, you can corroborate that, those of you that are involved. You know, I think everybody's very aware that we need to, you know, constantly be staying on top of this and educating ourselves and thinking about how else we can get data. And Cooley Dickinson has done some data collection of adults and some focus groups about, you know, I think they were more focused on heart disease and things like that, but they probably... They may have asked some things. We don't, you know, we don't ourselves collect data on adult use.
Sure.
But there may be, you know, it's... I appreciate you bringing that up.
Just things to not forget.
Absolutely.
As we're talking about community forums and parent educational events and stuff, to make sure that we're not excluding that information.
Right.
Because we have these three focus categories.
Right. And, you know, keeping also in mind that we're, you know, because we're focused on prevention, prevention is prevention. I mean, we're looking for, you know, moving towards healthy decision-making and positive, healthy behaviors, and that affects any drug or any risky behavior. So we're looking for those universal messages and positive parenting support and things that are, you know, it's going to impact any of those, so.
And I think, too, that it's just important to remember that just like our school improvement plans, my district improvement plan here in the school department, we revise it every year. We look at new data and revise the plans based on our new data, and we do that the same in the coalition.
Yep.
Just, I just have one kind of a concern on, based on my former professional experience. We did a lot of training, because I worked in what was considered a high-risk district, about this adult and adolescent psychology issue of lumping and the importance of distinguishing... Nobody... I don't want to breeze past the harmful effects of marijuana on an adolescent brain. I'm well-versed in that. But I also, what we saw when we were being trained and taught in this, is that if the adult authorities were communicating to them that it was a similar or same risk of prescription medications, Molly, heroin, cocaine, et cetera, if marijuana's risks were being lumped in to be at the same level of that, and then, as, you know, we all understand it to be a gateway drug, they begin abusing marijuana and feel, for the time, very few adverse effects, that it becomes kind of conditioned for them to believe that all these awful things, they've been heard about, these even more dangerous substances are less likely to be believed. So that's my only caution, is that we're giving them the accurate information, but that I don't want it to be considered fear-mongering, that they believe they're seeing past and kind of missing the big picture, that there are boogeymen out there, you know? Those other narcotics are fatal, potentially, you know? And not to say that I don't want to support healthy brains and, you know... There's a reason that marijuana can pass and be legalized, and heroin will not, you know? They're apples and oranges.
I would suggest maybe going to some of the coalition meetings. I think they've been very informative.
Yeah.
What you'll see there is the input that they take from everybody. I mean, working with the district attorney, working with Cooley Dickinson Hospital.
I'm just viewing it from that adolescent and teenage perspective, and kind of how they're... How they're going to hear that, how they're going to process that, and what, you know?
If you have any data about that, I'd love to see it.
Yeah, and I'm going to look, because, I mean, stacks of... Hopefully, I never throw anything away, so I probably...
I mean, you got to find it.
But the lumping sticks in my mind.
Yeah.
And sociology studies about, you know, how best to communicate with especially at-risk teenagers and adolescents, but the dangers without...
Right. And I appreciate what you're saying about the fear-mongering. I mean, we know it doesn't work. You know, this is your brain, this is your brain on drugs, like, you know, scared straight, all that stuff.
That did work, actually.
Yeah, that one really didn't work. And there's a lot of data about why scare tactics don't work. There is that small group of people, probably kids who are like me, who, you know, weren't risk-takers, and so that kind of stuff just did scare me, but I wasn't the one they really needed to...
Right.
Yeah. So, you know, I think that we know a lot more in the public health field about what works and what doesn't, and it's important to keep that in mind, and when we're choosing our strategies, to keep that in mind as well. So I appreciate you bringing that up. It's very relevant.
Thanks.
I was curious, when you mentioned the impression that's created by the movement to legalize marijuana, and that the way young people interpret that in terms of their relationship with it, is there anything suggests, and I'm thinking now in terms of our school population, that since medicines are prescribed for folks who suffer from attention deficit disorder, and that that can create a mixed message for students, and is that another realm that you also are getting some... How aware is the coalition's effort of things like that and also of performance-enhancing drugs?
Yeah. Well, the whole prescription drug use issue is a huge problem nationally. Again, because it didn't rise to the percentage points that we're seeing with the other drugs, it hasn't been a priority issue for the community, but it's a huge issue. And this school, like every other school, I am sure, has issue... I mean, it has a small percentage of students who say, yes, I've taken drugs that weren't prescribed to me, prescription drugs, so ADHD medicine or some Ritalin thing, those are the common ones, that, you know, I wasn't prescribed by a doctor to me. And young people are certainly doing that and not necessarily perceiving the risks or feeling in the short term maybe enhanced by it. Or maybe they really do need medication, but they should be going to a doctor and being assessed about how they need it. Or usually, it's because they want to stay up all night, or they're trying to get high or something. You know, it's not usually for reasons that really enhance... In the end, when you really start to break out the data, a lot of times, kids will say, oh, I smoke marijuana because it actually helps me focus. And the data is just not bearing that out, as we start to really look at, the more you smoke, in fact, the more it negatively impacts on your ability to focus and your ability to remember things and your ability to wake up in the morning and, you know, get to school and all of that stuff. And so there's a perception of what any drug they're taking that they shouldn't be, and how they think it's impacting them, and in the long run, what we're seeing from data just on the national basis, that's not really bearing that out, unfortunately.
And Ruth, the PNAS survey that we did originally, did that deal with prescription drugs? Was there a question around prescription drugs?
Yep.
So there'll be another one on this new survey that's coming out.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Is it possible we could just be sent with the slides or the graphs about just... I'm just for my own curiosity, to see what the range was and what the numbers were of usage and...
Yes, certainly.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that I asked some questions, and they're not at all meant to be critical I share, and fully support the mission of what you're doing, and appreciate the difficulty of it. And I know even when the data is plainly presented to folks about behavior that's harmful, sometimes it's so seductive, and we can think of things that are perfectly legal. I would guarantee you that the overwhelming majority of students would tell you that wearing headphones and listening to music helps them concentrate better. The evidence is overwhelmingly to the contrary. Less than 4% of students benefit from doing that, and they only benefit under a very strict set of circumstances. It's not what most kids use when they listen to music. But it's seductive, because they feel better, and it makes a whole host of other management-related issues to working with young people easier to do, because kids listening to music on headphones tend not to act out in other ways, when we might prefer to do the hard work of helping them study and focus and do some of the important things that schools accomplish. So I think the enormity of the challenge is clear, because that's not illegal. Nobody's out there saying we should ban that or outlaw it. But just education around it is extraordinarily difficult. Here, we're dealing with something that is illegal and fighting the educational battle, and I applaud the effort of the coalition in doing that and hope for its continued success.
Thank you. Totally happy to get feedback. I'm, you know, really, it's like wonderful to engage and get opportunities to educate people about what we're doing and to, you know, engage in public debate about it. So it's... I'm thrilled to be here.
Ruth, I happened to see in the Gazette recently, there was a speaker that came to, I think it was North Hampton High School, that was a former professional...
Chris Heron.
Chris Heron.
Celtics player, was it?
Yes.
Celtics player. And just reading that whole article, I thought it sounded like a fabulous program, and that it would have a huge impact on anyone who was able to hear what he had to say. And I was just wondering, is there any chance we could have something... Have him come to our school?
We could. Yeah, we certainly could. It's... He's an interesting character. You know, he's generally... He kind of falls into the category of scared straight tactics, which we know don't work. But I've heard him speak, and he is extremely compelling, and he has a very intense story to tell. And a lot of the young people are very riveted by it and very touched by his story. He seems very sincerely, you know, remorseful and has a lot of regrets that he's sort of living with, and this is his way of trying to sort of help somebody else to not fall into the pitfalls that he fell into.
I think people who look at him as a role model, people who can imagine themselves following his track of... or who wish to follow his track of athletic success, find that story compelling. I agree with you that the scared straight theme is part of what he's pitching, and certainly anyone with empathy who's in the room with Chris Heron is going to walk out emotionally affected by the presentation. But I think it is really... I mean, I have advisees who still talk. He came and spoke to our students and who still referenced that conversation, even though considerable... You know, the half-life of ideas among an adolescent mind is about a week, and something that happened, you know, two years ago, that they still speak to. He's incredible.
Anthony Burdine was here locally recently filming a special discussing his time in this area.
Yeah. Yeah, that was... Yeah. So I mean, I think that there is some interest in that. There's some other speakers as well that we're interested in. He's not, you know, cheap, so we... It'd probably be something that... so we, it'd probably be something that we would want to try to collaborate. There was actually a number of groups in Northampton that brought him out. So, if there's interest from people, they probably can make that happen.
I think that'd be great. It just seems like it's a pretty powerful program, pretty powerful opportunity for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to say a special thanks to Ruth and all the work she's done. She really just hit the ground running, and we've just made some amazing progress since Ruth has taken on this position of Coalition Director. When we went, when I went with her to Mississippi to Gulfport in June, was June, correct? And we compared some of the work that we had done with other new coalitions, it just felt like we were leaps and bounds ahead of where some of the other new coalitions are. So, you know, a great big thank you to Ruth and all the work she's done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, the next piece on the superintendent's report is the school committee meeting schedule. And Sue Colby drafted this for us based on what our schedule looked like for this year. And so, this is an opportunity for everyone to look at it and react and see if there are any changes that you want to have made to the schedule.
When's Valentine's Day? Sorry.
Fourteenth.
Okay.
Really?
Really? It's the Saturday? Okay, I think they always stick that in the middle of the week sometimes. I just wanted to be sure.
It's worse when it's in the middle of the week.
I remember having a building committee meeting on February fourteenth.
Yeah, yeah.
I was wondering if we could potentially add a meeting to June 23rd. Nancy, you and I had talked about the whole superintendent evaluation cycle and that how, how, having that happen at the beginning of June was such a crunch with graduation and all the end-of-year things. And that if we had a meeting on the 23rd, we could maybe push that back a little bit, timing-wise? That just popped into my head just now.
Add a meeting to the 23rd or push the ninth back to the 23rd?
Uh, we probably need to keep the ninth, I'm guessing.
I would agree that in June, we end up with a crush of things that we want to get done, including the superintendent evaluation. That always takes more time. I know, Lori, you've been on the committee as long as I have. Is that your recollection as well?
I agree.
I was thinking, if we had the 23rd, if we could ease that stress level a little bit of the.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Evaluation time.
Are there any concerns of doing that along with end-of-year budget stuff? No?
Well, that, but that sucks up another hour that we could be in work session getting evaluation done, yeah? No?
Say that again.
I thought, my recollection from June was that the problem was we had all these additional work sessions. We had to, you know, it took up a real lengthy.
Right, there's a lot.
So, if we schedule another regular session, that's one less hour we can spend in work session.
Well, if we schedule another regular session on the 23rd, then the pressure for the due dates to get things done is eased because then we would be presenting before the end of the school year at that date, rather than trying to compress it all into happening before the ninth.
And we can always do the work session right before, do two work sessions, one right before the.
Yeah, we could spread it out a little bit more.
Yep.
Do we need to add the 23rd?
Could we? Any other comments?
Just a question, has there ever been any discussion as to the time of the meeting? Has anybody ever discussed a six or a 6:30?
I would love a six or a 6:30.
Me too.
But I think everyone else shot me down last time we brought it up.
I think the challenge becomes.
You know, schedules are, are different for everybody, but, you know, as you, you'll kind of notice the trend to the meetings is earlier, and, I mean, I would love an earlier meeting, but I know it's difficult with people, different work schedules too. So, I was just throwing it out there to see if there's any.
Well, the only thing I think of in response to that is that oftentimes we get into the season of having to have so many budget work sessions and other types of work sessions that end up starting an hour more earlier than the seven o'clock meeting.
Well, we could have our meeting earlier and the work sessions after them.
What if we did 6:30, if we split the difference? Is that a hardship for anyone, or? Are we, is that something we can do temporarily and change it back if it becomes a problem? Or is this something we have to set?
Yeah, we can set the time that we meet.
Right, anytime. On a, on a weekly.
Instantaneous, as long as we post it.
Seven days.
On stairs, a week ahead, we can, we can change that in our discretion.
I'd be in favor of it earlier.
Is, I was just going to say, is there anybody that would have difficulty getting here earlier because of their, you know, their earlier commitments?
Yeah, I can.
What then?
Lori, what do you think?
Well, I prefer seven, but I can, I can make it work.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer seven, but I certainly understand the sentiment. And I would be curious to see what it would do with, you know, people attend, you know, attending and the availability of other, other folks. You know, sometimes there, there are people working in the community who we like to have come in who are done with their workday at four or five and may go far afield. If we're meeting an hour later, maybe they'd be, you know, more likely to be able to stay. So, I could see.
I agree.
Advantages.
I agree.
To, to try and be earlier, and then, you know, I don't think any of us are going to enjoy doing a work session after the meetings, but.
Yeah.
But a work session at 5:30 isn't that bad.
Oh, but that won't, I can, there I, yeah.
Yeah, that 5:30 doesn't work for me.
Yeah, my, my work life just means that it's, for two out of the three seasons of the school year, I would be afraid that I'd be absent a lot and, or late, and.
I just think having work sessions after the meeting too would be tough, that we wouldn't be at our best to be as productive as.
Honestly, that's how I feel about the seven o'clock meeting.
Right, me too.
Is I feel like I'm fried when it starts. And, and, but it's, but going on the other end too. Like, if, I don't, I don't work a nine to five, so it's, it's.
Well, maybe we could do, you know, like, just as we were saying, and Peter brought up, we can make the meetings anytime we want, whenever we want, as long as you post them, you know, the week before. So, we could try, you know, different things and see what works for everybody. And maybe your work sessions, I hate to say this, but on another night, you know?
Yep.
Or maybe nights when we know we need a work session, we move those to seven.
We push the meeting back to seven if we had to have a work session.
So, do you want to try that, that if we do not have a work session, the meeting will begin at six? And if we do, the regular meeting will begin at seven?
Is 6:30 easier than six for anybody?
I, I, yeah, it's just, I work till five and sometimes later, but.
So, is 6:30 better than six, though? Would you, I know seven is your priority.
I like to eat supper first.
Yes.
I know, so.
But honestly, like what Peter said, a lot of people don't, and I don't mean don't like to eat supper. I don't mean that at all. Just like to come straight from or as they're, as they're out in the bow, but.
I mean, I'll, I'll do six. I just, a nine to five or so, yeah.
How about a show of hands? How many people prefer to keep the meeting at seven? Prefer, show of hands?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I've been persuaded. I, seven works for me, but I'm flexible and will try to work.
You're going to raise your hand at all of them.
I'm going to say yes. I mean, I try to come to the six o'clock work sessions when we have them. And, and that's great. I, I do see some merit to, to trying for six. I, I understand Lori's position because I often, you know, I'm done and come off the, the coaching field at 5:30 and, you know, but I, I'm happy to try six.
I feel like six cuts it maybe too close for that.
Or 6:30, I'm happy to try that.
Doesn't give me time for supper, and if you get out of work, is it 6:30?
Let's compromise at 6:30.
We could move with the sun.
We could what?
We could shift with the sun. In the winter, we come a little earlier. In the summer, we go a little later.
Daylight saving.
Yeah, daylight saving schedule for the school committee meetings.
Let's have an informal, non-binding vote, just to see where we're at. For those of you who would prefer seven o'clock on a regular basis, raise your hand. Okay, two of us. How many would prefer 6:30 on a regular basis?
Well, how many choices are we getting?
Because I'm going to be like Peter.
Is there, is there a seat?
Six, 6:30 or seven?
Is there all of the above? I'll try my best to.
Okay, so what is this? Six, 6:30 or seven? So, we did seven, there were two of us.
I want to have the meetings at Gulfport, but no.
6:30? Six thirty. 6:30 we have.
6:30, it's great. I'll do 6:30.
Four. Okay, six o'clock. Okay, so the 6:30s have it.
And if it's, if it sucks, Lori, be honest. If it really becomes like a hard, just let us know when we push it back.
Or if we need to do a bound bag dinner together, picnic.
Yeah, that's the next question. When did you want to start?
Want to try it for the December meeting and just see how it goes?
It's going to be darkest pitch, it might help.
I'm checking out the size of the door here, Lori. I'm thinking you get a Subway sandwich in here. We'll get you, we'll get you through the meeting.
All right, so, beginning at the next meeting, we'll try a 6:30 meeting time?
6:30 on December ninth, yeah.
And then, when we need to have a work session, what is going to be the plan, case by case?
I think we have work sessions at six, and we ought to stick with work sessions at.
I think those starts is meeting afterward. I think those might, some meetings.
We say we're going to have a, a work session, then you can tell Sue and she'll schedule it, the work session at six and the meeting at seven.
Okay, very good.
Uh, we have two in January. Can somebody remind me why? Two weeks? Is it the budget? What do we?
Normally, you have two meetings a month.
Yeah, we usually do.
It's just when the.
It, it, yes, normally two meetings a month, but on some months, like November and December, because there's so much going on, we have one meeting.
Because there's more months with one meeting than two meetings, that's all, that's why I was asking.
I think tonight's presentation is an example, and perhaps it would be helpful to do it in a work session. I also think it's an opportunity to invite, you know, sort of invite the public. If you increase, without saying we're going to be, you know, having a meeting every week, when things come up, it's, it's nice to not say to somebody, well, you missed this month's meeting, and so it'll be next month. I think it's, it's always helpful.
So, when we can, we do two a month?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's really helpful. November and December are just tough because of holiday and other calendar questions.
February's vacation week, so I guess that's why we have one there.
February, March, you're usually having budget work sessions also.
So, you're having a second meeting?
Mm-hmm, makes sense.
Well, you skipped my birthday, thank you. I appreciate that. You sandwiched me in, but technically, we won't be meeting on my birthday, so that's great.
We can change that.
Any other comments or suggestions?
A motion to appro, yes? Do we have to?
No, great, perfect, moving on. 6:30 on December eighth.
No, what?
Our next meeting is at 6:30. December ninth. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you.
That's okay.
I thought we met last time. Um, okay. Okay, next on the agenda is minutes approval.
Yeah, motion to approve the minutes from the school committee regular session on October 30th, 2014.
All those in favor?
You just have to.
All those in favor?
Hi. And Peter.
I'm standing.
Thank you.
I was already going to do it, I really was.
I know, you're really on top of that. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
You want some payroll?
A motion to approve this school payroll dated November 13th, 2014 in the amount of $456,366.80. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated November 13th, 2014 in the amount of $564,503.48. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Peter already hit all of these, if you want to sign.
Can you just, if I may make a comment again, and I, and I share this because I think the taxpayers in the community want to know that, again, when, you know, when I came in to sign, I was able to ask about a half dozen light items that aren't immediately self-explanatory to me, even though I've been looking at them, and getting clear answers, sometimes surprising answers about, you know, things that we are required to spend the city's resources on, that explain why education is, is expensive. We've talked before about sort of mandates that come, but, but I think we are doing a good job with this process that we've been using of checking through these warrants and being sure that the, that the, you know, there's never a guarantee, but I think all the answers I get suggest that things are completely understood. It's really easy to get a quick answer and a quick explanation. And I appreciate everything that the business consultant and all the folks who work in the, in the office do. Maria in particular is great.
Yes, Maria is wonderful.
I'm sorry, I can't pronounce her last name without seeing.
I know.
Anybody want to try? No, so, thank you, Maria.
Okay.
Motion to approve an out-of-state fuel trip request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we have a school choice opening request. Superintendent Fowlesby, do you want to?
Yes, I did want to just have a little discussion with you this evening about school choice and school choice openings because I think there's some confusion about how openings occur, and I have consulted with our school department attorney, Russell Dupere, to be sure that we're doing it all in, in the correct way. So, there are state rules and regulations and laws that, that dictate how we do our school choice program and how school choice openings occur, and what happens if we have more students than we have an opening for. So, we cannot open a school choice slot for one family because that would not be equitable for all families in the district. So, if we have a, and what's been happening lately is we've had families who've been moving out of East Hampton and wanted their students to stay in our schools. So, if we have, open a school choice slot, and the openings of slots are determined by building administrators based on what they believe are appropriate class sizes. So, if a building administrator believes that he or she can open a slot for a family because a family's moving out and they want their child to stay, a building administrator can make that decision, but we have to advertise that opening for a period of two weeks and then take any other families who want to be put into that pool for that choice slot, put them on a list. Then, we have to do a lottery and then choose a, randomly choose one of the families from that lottery. If we only have one family wanting that opening, then we can give that opening to that family. If we already have somebody on a waitlist, or if a, well, let's say, let me take the first example. If a building administrator believes that the class sizes are large enough that he or she does not want to open another slot, then that's, that's their decision, and we honor that decision. I honor that decision. I would hope that school committee would honor that decision. If a slot is opened, if the, let's say, one grade level at the elementary school has been closed, and it was closed in September, but there is a family that wants to keep their children in our schools or bring our children, a child into our schools, an administrator can make a choice to open a slot, but if there are already families on the waitlist, you know, when that slot was closed, then, again, we put, we do a lottery and randomly select a family. So, you know, unless you're opening multiple slots, one family isn't guaranteed that slot. The intention of all of this is to treat all families equitably and give every family who wants an opportunity and that chance to have that opportunity.
Do we offer priority for families who have siblings already attending the district?
Yes, and that's, that's according to the rules and regulations, yes.
I just want to reminder that, that we had another one of these, that the last time we met, and I think we had requested that in the future, if there's ever a request to open a school choice slot, that it, this, it be attached to the current enrollment numbers, just for us to look at, so we're making them. I understand that it's Vito's calling, Vito's making a good call, but I don't, you know, just for my own due diligence, would like to see the enrollment numbers in the future.
So, I'll ask Sue Colby to make a note of that and be sure that she puts that with the school choice.
If we're ever questioned later on, I want to be able to answer informed.
The other thing is, at the high school level, though, it's not going to mean much of anything because.
It may not, but I, as a point of policy, if we're going to make school choice, if we're going to open school choice slots from now on, I'd just like to see the latest enrollment numbers.
Okay, just so that at the high school, though, as you know, classes are.
Right.
All over the place, so it wouldn't.
It's depending on what kind of courses we have to offer.
Right.
Nancy, I appreciate that discussion, and I, I don't, I hope that it's not necessary to make an amendment to satisfy this one kind of condition, but I think that, I understand the rules are set up to treat everyone equally, but I, I do understand in law that you can treat people differently and still be treating them equally. It seems to me that if a family enjoys the educational experience that they get here, they move to a different town. Let's say they've been renting here and they can finally afford to buy a house in a neighboring town, but they so appreciate the education here. I know that we get the money from whoever fills the slot, and it comes from whatever district, but it seems to me reasonable to say that they stand at a different place than another family that isn't there. And I would love to see the law to allow, in the same way that it allows if there are other siblings, it allows, you know, us to treat that candidate differently. It just seems, it seems like a terrible shame to say, well, you know, your child's been here for, for 10 years, but you lost out in the lottery of the five folks who wanted to. wanted to have the one spot, so you could spend your junior and senior year somewhere else. And we can defend ourselves by saying, well, that's the law. But I think when the, you know, when someone's out on the sidewalk talking about it, they're not going to, they're going to be upset with us. They're not going to be upset with the state legislature.
Especially because that student is holding that spot. It's, they're opening.
They're already there.
They're opening the spot, they're putting themselves at risk. For the person that's in it.
Right.
So I didn't know that. That was a really good explanation, but.
Well, and unfortunately, unfortunately, as a superintendent of schools, I have to follow the rules, regulations and laws of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Yeah, I'm proposing that we share this with Representative Seibek and State Senator Humison and say, is, this doesn't pass the common sense test. I don't think anyone thinks it's unfair treatment to say to someone who's been here for a long period of time and enjoys education that because their family moved, I mean, we have school choice for a reason. And if we're going to have to live with the troubling side effects of it, here's, here's one that we seem to be creating just through an attempt to create a, you know, an artificial sense of equality.
And Peter's right, from a PR perspective, we're the only ones with mud on our faces anytime we have to turn someone down. Sometimes you do, the numbers just don't allow for it, but they're not going to, they're not going to hold anyone else at fault aside from our district. They're not going to say, oh, yeah, those stinking representatives or those people that wrote all those.
Well, however, I do think that we, I think that we did a very thorough job of explaining to this one family that I think we probably all have in mind at this point in time. You know, what, what we are obligated to do and what we are not allowed to do.
Doesn't always go over that well.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just saying, Laura, that I think that in many different ways, from many different people, this was explained to this family. It's not what we would wish, it's not what we wish we had to do. That is not what we would like to do. And, you know, we, we do the best we can, you know, to make it as, as easy as possible for that transition for that family. But again, there are circumstances beyond our control.
Right, that was a very good explanation. I was not aware of that. So that's a really good explanation of the process and the regulations and.
Yep, they don't always fit with our, you know, our concern for our families and children, but they are what we have to do until they get changed.
And that's sometimes all you have to say about some of the legislation that comes out.
I do think though, just on a positive note, what's it? It could be different, a very different conversation depending on grade level, depending on, you know, other variables at play. But I think, just to share a positive on one particular family is Nancy shared in that the building levels get to make, building administrators get to make decisions about exit dates.